The next question will begin with Mrs. Maria Carrasco and move to the candidates' right. What, if any, aspects of the Lynn School's current curriculum, academic standards, and/or graduation requirements do you believe need to be improved or changed and why?
As I said before, I believe that our curriculum should be a little more sensitive to the culture that we have in our schools. We have a special social study curriculum that should reflect our student population. We should look at our data every year to find out how many students drop out, how many students got prenticed, how many students are on a roll in classes, how many students are able to attend the course and finish it, how many students we have in a special aid and for how long they are there. After that, we should find out what we are doing right and continue improving and also ask what we do wrong and how can we do better. We have in our city a data that show us that why we have 10.80% of people with only nine to 12 grades without graduating from high school. We have here a high rate of dropout higher than the whole Massachusetts. We have here 11% of students, teenagers prenticed. We have here in our city a population that 12 grades, 12 that never graduate. And 12% of population that never graduated from high school. So what is going on in our city? I think that that is to be the question. What are we doing? What are we doing in our system to improve something strong?
That's time.
And we need to work on those issues.
Well, I'd like to see that every student come to school and just love to come here and really want to learn. We all know the girls like it a little better than the boys do, school. The girls are always more excited to come than the boys are. But I would like to see that be a big piece because I think if you really want to come here and you're really excited about it, you're going to do better and you're not going to drop out. I think part of our problem is maybe adding on more hands-on opportunities for our kids, more visual learning for our kids. Also kind of look at the homework policy. You know, where are we with that? Some kids are spending hours on homework when we actually have a policy and I don't know how it happens, but some kids are spending a lot of time on homework and others get very little. So get it to be uniform. And also offer a curriculum that makes testing less stressful. These kids are really stressed. I mean, think of us as adults when we were kids, if we had to go through MCAS and everything that's on the plate for them. So, you know, I'd like to see that we make it more fun and make testing less stressful and end up to be more successful for the kids. And we'll be more successful for the Lynn School System, too.
With regards to the current curriculum and the academic standards, I see a few problems that are happening right now in the Lynn Public Schools. We have elementary schools that do not have reading teachers. We have to beg to receive a part-time reading teacher and coacheal with another school. We have no librarians in most of our schools except for the Level Four schools that receive numerous funding. You know, as a parent on the PTO and having some PTO members here, they are filling the gap that the schools should be requiring, providing the funding and the services and the parents, not having the parents do all of the work. At this point, I also see that our teachers are not receiving the proper resources and tools and funding and having to pay out of pocket many of the times to provide for their schools for necessary needs like erases and pencils and papers. I just had my second-grade teacher ask if I could assist her with getting more erases. And absolutely, as the room parent, I'll do that graciously. Another problem I see with graduation is the MCAS. It is unfair to children with disabilities. It's unfair because there's language barriers. And I looked at the 10th grade test and I have to tell you, I'm an educator, it is difficult. It is a difficult exam and I don't think it should be the only basis for a student to graduate. It should not be the only tool used. Thank you.
When I look at our curriculum and I look at our standards and I look at our graduation requirements, what is most noted is that our curriculum is state-driven. It is what Lynn does with the state-driven curriculum that is so important. Right now, the most important thing, the most effort has been put on professional development. And that has a huge impact on scores, on the classroom, on learning. If our teachers are not academically prepared and do not have the strategy skills to teach those students, then those classrooms are not going to be successful. Where I see the need and where I see where we have to continue to grow is in our middle schools. Our middle schools have to become high school-ready. If they're not high school-ready, they are behind the eight ball at 12 years old. We need to be sure that we encompass those middle schools, that we have strong strategies, strong teacher support, and strong student support to make them successful at 11 and 12 and do not carry the burden of failed MCAS. Because we have to remember, it's not just Lynn that has failing middle schools. It's 96% of the state's middle schools have been identified as needs improvement. So in Lynn, we want to change that.
Because we have spent considerable time and resources in the MCAS areas of ELA and mathematics, I think we should now concentrate a bit more on the science curriculum, particularly at the middle school and the elementary level. We should also continue to add advanced placement classes at the high school level. Graduation requirements are being changed as dictated by the State Department as part of their race to the top application for federal government monies. The School Department has a program specialist who is in charge of Race to the Top initiatives and she will be working with the high school principals over the next few years to implement that Mass Core requirement for graduation. Our plans for an innovative school that is strong in science should bring us great ideas to replicate in other elementary schools. We are on a good path to improve science at the elementary schools, but we must make use of some of the traveling partnerships that are around in the science area, such as the Museum of Science, the New England Aquarium, MIT, the Stary Messenger, the Stargate Apprentice Program, the Hitchcock Center for the Environment, the MIT Chemistry Outreach Program. Saugus Watershed has a terrific program that talks about animals that are in the Lynn Woods in our ponds that are near us, the Habitat Studies. Thank you.
The question mentions graduation requirements and graduation requirements now are being currently being looked at and reevaluated by the state as part of the Race to the Top Application with the federal government. That being said, I really think we have to encourage an even greater emphasis on STEM. We've mentioned STEM, science, technology, engineering, and management. Our society is becoming more and more technological and I really think we have to teach to the technology. Mary Saris of the North Shore Career Center, I was speaking to her and she said that in the manufacturing jobs that were there hiring, they're looking for ever more and increasing mathematics background. And in a state, we were rich in medical and biotechnical jobs and companies. We have to gear our educational system to the future job requirements. I really also think we should stop teaching to MCAS. I think MCAS, as Mr. Filippo said, puts some unfair burdens on certain students. I think we have to have some sort of a standardization test, but I think it should be fairer to the student and on a more equal global playing field.
So the question is how can we change and improve curriculum and academic standards? And I see two areas where we can do that. One is with a balanced curriculum and two is with respect to early childhood education. On a balanced curriculum, we hear a lot about MCAS scores in the news and certainly we need to prepare our students for the MCAS exam. But we also need to provide a well-rounded educational experience and prepare them for life outside the classroom. I think we have a great community in Lynn and that we should use it. We should be teaming up with local businesses and nonprofits and community leaders. That way, that the subjects that fall outside of the MCAS exam, the trades, the arts, civics, real-world life skills, are all included as part of our students' educational experience. On early childhood education, I commend the current school committee for offering all-day kindergarten, but I think that we should be expanding that and to offer all-day pre-K, quality all-day pre-K to every child in Lynn. I have friends who are starting families or having children and pre-K is not affordable to them. We all know that the sooner we start educating the children, the better, and I think that all-day pre-K is a right step for the Lynn School Committee.
As far as curriculum, Massachusetts has signed on to the Common Core national standard. Within the next couple of years, we will be adopting the Common Core standard. And whether or not that proves to be better than what we've got now remains to be seen, but at least the measuring tool used to account as to how we're doing will at least be designed for the standards that we're going by. To Mr. Gallo's point, as I said in the last debate, I too agree that pre-K is of the utmost importance. Right now, we've got some kids that are going to pre-K for two years. If they get it as a three-year-old, they're automatic as a four-year-old, yet we have some kids that don't get picked in the draft when they're three and they don't get picked when they're four. They go into kindergarten with no school experience, competing with some kids to have up to two years' experience. I want to make sure that before we offer pre-K to three-year-olds, that we're giving it to every four-year-old. As I said earlier, we went to the, we had the dean of education from Harvard at Lynn English and she put out the statistics, as Mr. Spirito alluded to earlier, of how important it is to have kids going through pre-K. We have to make sure, and I don't think all-day pre-K is going to be attainable or affordable for us in the near future, but we need to make sure that we provide pre-K for every four-year-old in the city of Lynn.
The next question will begin with Mr. Rick Starbird and move to the candidates' right. With poor MCAS scores and a reported dropout rate that ranges between 22 and 32% at the secondary level, the special education population in Lynn is particularly struggling academically. In what ways would you help to improve the special education department in Lynn?
I've spoken to both regular ed teachers and special ed inclusion teachers and they say that they're both seeing positive results of this. It takes a certain kind of teacher to be able to work in that environment, but I think that that's a step in the right direction. We also need to bring that down into the middle schools because we have some kids in middle schools that are basically isolated with sometimes up to three grades in one room all day with the same teacher. Then they get sent out to high school and they're lost. So we need to bring this inclusion program down into the middle schools as well. As far as the dropout, we have instituted a dropout prevention program in all our high schools. There's a dropout prevention coordinator where kids at risk of being referred to to hopefully keep these kids in school. We're also fortunate to have the Fecto Leary School that catches some at-risk kids. They graduate 40-plus, you know, so kids a year, but those are 40 kids that would otherwise be dropping out.
We still have low score in MCAS and as many of us, I don't agree with the MCAS because I believe that many students, they might be excellent and during the test, they screw up because it's not. But I believe that we need to take care when kids are in grammar school, elementary school. When they go to third grade and they don't pass the MCAS, that is a big problem for them. And I think that because we have still teachers with a big classroom and overcrowded. We have students right now in third grade in some school, 31 students. That is so difficult for one teacher to provide all the necessary, I mean, time that that students need or preparation for those students. So if we are starting to prepare our students from the beginning, I believe that we might reduce the dropout, we might reduce or increase the MCAS grade, we might reduce the youth violence because if we take those kids from the grammar schools, we're going to see that in the middle school, they don't want to have a problem because they want to continue the same path that they have in the grammar school. They're going to continue that same path until they go to the high school education. Thank you.
Special education students have been struggling with the MCAS scores and also the dropout rates and at a higher level than some of the other areas and the categories. But when you study, when you look at studies about dropouts and you see that, one, it's attendance. You've got to come to school and that's part of the dropout, preventing that. And I think that we see numbers in special ed, sometimes the attendance isn't the best. Also retention, repeating kids, having them stay back. Testing is important, preparing them for testing. Suspensions, suspensions never help a student in, you know, getting, moving along. It just kind of contributes to the dropout. But also, I think our problem here in Lynn sometimes is when you're in a particular elementary school and you go along from grade to grade, that gives you stability. And lots of times in our special ed, we'll move a whole classroom from one school to another school. Now that child has to start over. They're, you know, what we used to call years ago, army brats, you know, their parents are in the military and they move from place to place. We're sort of doing that with some of our classrooms or with the kids. Maybe it is a better program from one school to another school. But honestly, is it in the best interest of that child? And maybe in some ways, we have contributed to why it isn't.
I understand the question to be how would you address and improve, sorry about that, the special ed department. You know, unfortunately, most of the students in Massachusetts that drop out of school, most of them have a documented disability, whether it's speech impediment or hearing or dyslexia. And unfortunately, some of the school districts do not grab hold of that student right away and make sure that they have the services that are required. And self-esteem is part of that. When a child has a disability, there are times when they will not want to speak up and say that things are not working for them. One of the ways I would like to hold our special ed department accountable in the city of Lynn is making sure that they comply with the individual education plans, the IEPs. We are losing money hand over fist by hiring an outside private counsel in this city to fight most of our families. It is unfair, it is unjust. We need to start standing up and demanding that children with disabilities receive proper services, especially if they have documented disabilities from professionals, doctors, you know, healthcare providers. Parents are sometimes put in a position where they find themselves at a loss. And that's why you have a lot of families in the city that are frustrated and be, thank you, sorry.
I struggled answering this question because I don't agree with the statistic given. 22 to 32% is just wrong. I could not find that rate. I went onto the DOE website to find out our dropout rate, which is 5.4, and it's actually down from the prior year of data, which is 6.1. And if this piece of data is talking about dropout rate in our special ed department, I couldn't find any data that would even suggest a third of our special ed department, our students are dropping out. But what I do see in reviewing special ed and high school and MCAS is that we are on an IEP. Those are individual ed plans. We have a percentage of students in our high school that will never pass MCAS. But are they meeting their goals? Are they meeting their challenges? Yes, they are. Do they leave with a certificate of completion? Yes, they do. Are there things that we can do better within our special ed department? Yes, we can continue, as I've said all evening, with professional development for our teachers. They can take that regular ed curriculum and they can find out how to matriculate that into the needs of each child because their expectations are to pass MCAS on regular standards. That's what we need to continue to do, is help those students meet their needs within a regular ed curriculum.
When we look at poor MCAS scores, we're looking at subgroups in special education. Statewide, the subgroups in sped are problematic. However, Lynn has placed first in common similar communities such as Lawrence, Lowell, Boston, Fall River, Brockton, Springfield, New Bedford, and Worcester. I think special ed needs more technical assistance, more closely monitoring of outside placements, trying to get those students back from outside placements back into our system. More parent training and participation. Parents need to know their rights and to be active in their child's education. Improve diagnostics of disabilities. A lot of times, disabled students are not recognized. Set realistic goals. We must believe every student can and will succeed. More government funding. Only 17 cents on the dollar is picked up by the government. The rest is picked up by the district. Adequate support to our inclusion students at every level and a good pat on the back wouldn't help either.
I took a little different tact. I dispute the fact that it says here that we have poor MCAS scores and it's why I don't think students should be held hostage to one standardization rating. I'm looking at the MCAS results from the 24 mass urban districts and Lynn ranks number 12. But if you look at the nine large districts that Mr. Spirito alluded to, the communities I think we should be rated along with because of the similar population and demographics, we ranked number one in 2011 in both math and English. 2009 and 2010, we were number one and two. So I mean, if you rate apples and apples, you come up with something. We don't rank that badly. Our MCAS results are not that poor. And also, I couldn't find anything to substantiate the 22% dropout rate. I also found a 5.4 dropout rate. But I think the problem is that more cities and towns are being listed as underperforming in the MCAS proficiency, which is due to be attained by the year 2014, and it's not going to be happening. How do we, I think we should concentrate on how we can get our students a fair assessment.
So I told you during my opening that my philosophy is that all of our students deserve a quality education and that, of course, includes special education students. So the first way I think we can improve special education is by providing adequate resources, making sure our students have the support they need, making sure our teachers have the support that they need, making sure that our class sizes are within the limits set by the state. Another way that we can improve special education is by ensuring quality teachers. When we're hiring special education teachers and administrators, we should be considering their skills, their experience. That way, we have quality teachers providing a quality education to our special education students. Thereafter, we need to be supporting our teachers, providing ongoing training and professional development. Lastly, is to make sure that we support the families of special education students, helping out parents when they need a hand, but also listening to parents, working with the parent advisory council, and meeting with special education parents to see what we're doing right, what we're not doing right, and what we can do better. Thank you.
This next question will begin with Mr. Charlie Gallo and move to the candidates' right. There are approximately 76 different languages spoken by students and their families in the Lynn Public School System. In what ways would you address the multilingual nature of our school system in terms of facilitating and increasing non-English-speaking families' involvement in our schools?
Thank you for the question. I think parental involvement and further family involvement is really key, especially for non-English speakers and new Americans. Ford is a great model for getting families involved. The doors here do not close when the school bell rings and we should be working hard to make sure that the school doors never close when there's a parent who needs a hand. I'm in favor of supporting families and parents in any way we can with English language classes, with citizenship classes, helping with GEDs and job training. Community involvement, I think, also is key. We have a great, we have great community resources and we should be partnering with some of our Spanish and Comer, Russian and African language organizations to help with these students in their language. We should also be partnering with clinics so that we can help teach about health. We should be partnering with our community farmers to teach about nutrition. And by partnering with these communities, we can really help our non-English speakers and new American students. Thank you.
This question can be best answered by Dr. Crane because it's been going on here for years. It's nothing new, even though we are starting to run it down at tech for coronary parents through the funding available for being a Level Four school, but Dr. Crane has been doing this here for years. And how many parents here tonight are part of the ELL program upstairs? Many, because I know they came down from the classroom. There's approximately 200 parents that come here that get night care for their children in the room across the hall. So it can be done and it should be done because it's the only way we're going to succeed is by reaching the adults and trying to get the adults to speak English at home, to speak English to their kids. Because we cannot put 79 of these language speakers in each and every one of our schools. It's just not going to happen. So we need to get the English spoken at home. We need to teach our adults how to speak English and we need to involve the community. You know, back when the immigrants came here 100 years ago, they worked with each other. They taught each other. And we need to rely on other members of that community to help pull these people up and assimilate them into our culture and to learn English because it's truly the language of success.
As Rick Starbird said, we need more Ford schools around the city. We have one language that is universal language, body language. We need parents, even if they don't speak the language, to feel welcome when they come into the school. And they don't need to speak English or they don't need to understand English in order for them to feel welcome. When I came to the Ford school, the first time, my English was, if now is not good, before I was once. And I was able to, as soon I came to that school, I felt how Dr. Crane embraced me right away. So, and tried to understand me, tried to look for somebody to translate what she wanted to say to me. What I need and we need in our school system is teachers and administrators to be more sensitive to the culture of our people in our city. I believe that students at schools like Ford School, what they're doing is working with the whole family, not just the students. Dr. Crane is amazing. I believe there is a person that might make other people look bad because she's working more, she's going a little more what she's had to do. But I'm telling you that I feel like we need more schools around our city. It's not because I need, it's because the population needs a school right now. Thank you.
Success in public schools begins... Success in public schools begins at birth, and that's fine for people who are born here, and by the time they reach pre-K or kindergarten, that child is ready to learn. Our new citizens here in Lynn are coming from countries, maybe they're coming with children, they're going to enter second grade, third grade, seventh grade, tenth grade. We need to give them that three-year commitment that we do for the younger kids. And I think it costs money, but we need to put the money in the resources and give all new families coming here three years of commitment and support for them to understand, like, what we are asking of them when their children come here to public school. And I think that if we do that, we give the support to them, their children are going to achieve. And when they achieve, Lynn's going to reap the benefits of that. But you must make everybody feel welcome in our schools and give them the long-term support they need so that their kids are going to be successful. Thank you.
I have to say, the beauty of this country is the fact that we are open and receptive to people from different countries, different ethnicities, and that's the beauty of the city of Lynn. We are a melting pot. So one of the things I would love to see happen, and I'm fully invested in seeing happen as a child of immigrants myself, I would love to see that we get funding and look for resources to make sure that our schools are open and receptive to all nationalities. And by doing that, we need to secure some funding, and we need to take a hard look at the budget and see why all of our schools are not getting what is happening at the Connery and Harrington right now, where they have family facilitators that are working with families. The schools are staying open late. They are providing ELL programs, ESL, Second Language Learning. They are opening their doors and keeping them open to the community and to the multicultural families that are out there. So it is being done in this city, and it can be done in all of our schools. And I... One of my missions is to make sure that that is going to be happening. Thank you.
When I thought of this question, the two words that stuck out was facilitating and family involvement. English literacy for the whole family is key to our students' success. Our students succeed when parents are involved. Our parents will be involved when they understand the curriculum presented to them. So we need to be sure English literacy is available to not just the student, but the student's family through our schools, through our adult literacy, and through our community. But it was the family involvement and the facilitating piece that really had me thinking. And I thought, a hands-on approach. What could I, as a school committee member, truly do? And I thought, one thing that I know that I could propose and that we could do is to host school committee meetings in different schools throughout the year. We have a ten-month schedule with two meetings per month. We... If we devoted twenty-five percent of our school committee member meetings, that would be five schools a year that we could come and listen. You would have the particular school an open mic, and we would listen to that school and that school's need. I think it would show that we are reaching out, we are a hands-on committee, and we want to hear the pros, the cons, and the negatives of each and every school. Thank you.
I think family literacy is very important also. I also think that assessing the child's need as soon as he arrives at the school is very important. What matters is having the expertise in delivering the resources. I would increase English language classes for both adults in the day and in the evening, which is something the superintendent is now working on. I would also support the expansion of the current program that supports the younger children of those taking those English classes. That program encourages our younger children, parents, to provide smaller classes, library visits, and reading programs. I would also support, and this is most important, a multilingual parent liaison in each of the elementary schools.
It's amazing to me to see the number up to seventy-six languages and dialects so quickly, but it's a sign of the times, and it's something we must deal with. And again, it goes back to my answer on the community school. Greater family involvement in the educational process. I think that's a must. I also would encourage English language classes for adults, both day and evening, to make it accessible. Obviously, if the parent is more English proficient, it... There's more educate... I mean, more English used in the home and a greater family involvement. Education is forever. I would really like to see a case of like it is here at the Ford School, parents learning English with the students, parents learning to read with the students. To me, it really comes down to the family and family involvement.
This concludes the question and answer portion of the debate. Each candidate will now have two minutes to give their concluding statements. Closing remarks will now begin with Mr. Vincent Spirito.
Yes, as I have mentioned before, I have dedicated my entire adult life to the youth of Lynn, not only as a teacher, but as a principal, an administrator, a youth director, and a coach. I have been on the forefront of many of the programs that we talked about this evening: after-school programs, before-school programs, Saturday programs, ELL, GED programs for parents. I have worked for equity in all the schools. Teachers need the right tools to be successful. Safety and class size has been my primary goal. The highlight of my tenure over the last couple of years has been bringing in Lou Gossett Jr. for our Racism Summit for over 2,000 middle school children that we held at Lynn City Hall Auditorium. He spoke about the effects of racism and finding a peaceful solution to conflict. I think that with my proven leadership, my extensive experience with Lynn School Department policy and procedure, and complete knowledge of what's going on in the city makes me a viable candidate for my third term. Number four on the ballot, I'd like one of your six votes. Thank you for the opportunity tonight.
I consider myself to be a full-time school committee person. I work this job every day. I do my homework and try to make sound, practical decisions. I consider myself very involved in the community. I work for Representative Steve Walsh doing constituent service. I'm on the Board of Directors of Family and Children Services, Board of Directors of Building Bridges Through Music. That's run by Doreen Murray, who is a former school employee. I'm an active member of the Executive Committee and the community that cares. I'm on the Executive Committee of the Lynn Food and Fitness Alliance. We're involved in trying to improve upon the school lunch menus and improve better eating habits in the city of Lynn. I worked with Pete Capono the last three years to have a summer basketball league where seventy of the youth were occupied on Friday nights between 5:00 and 9:00, and this was done with no community money, it was all donated. I've coached Little League, Babe Ruth, and youth basketball. I just arranged for the football helmets from the three high schools to be given to West Lynn Papuaana, East Lynn Papuaana, and the Challenger Football League. I believe my involvement in the community makes me more aware of the needs of the kids of the city and better equipped to carry out my duties on the school committee. On November 8th, I'm number three on the ballot, and I would appreciate one of your votes. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to again thank the Ford School. I want to thank the Highlands Coalition. I want to thank our moderator, Cleo Harreford. Since it hasn't been mentioned, Cleo's blog, everyone should check out if you haven't already. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight and commend you for being informed voters. It's been great to have a conversation tonight about some of the big issues: funding, community schools, curriculum, special education, English language. During this campaign, those are the same issues that I've talked about as I've knocked on doors and as I've toured schools. Hopefully, you've learned about all the candidates tonight. If you'd like to learn more about me, you can visit wwwcharliegallow.com, send me an email, or give me a call. I know that the future of this city is in its schools. I want to work hard to improve our schools. To do that, I need your help and your support. The general election is Tuesday, November 8th. My name is Charlie Gallo. I'm number seven on the ballot, and I respectfully ask for one of your votes. Thank you.
Again, thank you all for coming out tonight. This was, out of the three debates, the biggest crowd by far. I love this city, I love our kids, and I love this job. Over the past twenty-two months, I've learned a great deal. Even after teaching in the Lynn Public Schools for fourteen years, parenting both my kids through every level, K through 12, and having a wife that works in the Lynn Public School System, I couldn't believe how much there still was to learn. I couldn't imagine going into this inexperienced. We have some challenging times ahead, and in these days of accountability, experience is a must. We have to have experience in the public school systems to truly know what's going on today. We're going to be building a new Marshall. Shortly thereafter, I hope we're going to be building a new Pickering. We need to go out and find out what other towns like Riviera are doing to get funding from the MSBA because they regularly put up schools at a pretty regular pace, and we need to do the same thing here because we've gone a long time. Think about it. Breed went up in the late '70s. We didn't build another new school till the late '90s. We've got some catching up to do. I proudly serve, prior to being elected on the school committee, on many boards throughout the city, including ones at Tech. I currently serve on the Lynn Tech School Council. I serve on the Board of Directors of LISOA. I regularly participate with the Highland Coalition, the East Lynn Community Association, and sponsor many organizations throughout the city. Again, I love this job, I love our kids, and I love the city of Lynn. I celebrate its diversity, and I've had a great time doing this job. Please consider me for one of your six votes so that I am re-elected number one on the ballot.
Pues, la situación es que estamos tratando de que usted devoten noviembre 8. Es son las elecciones. El que no pueda votar porque no tiene... Todavía no se han hecho ciudadanos americanos, por favor, hablen con su familia. Vayan a votar. Estamos vendiendo nuestro conocimiento. Estamos vendiendo ahora mismo. Todo estamos hablando de qué podemos hacer en el sistema escolar por nuestros estudiantes. Estoy hablando un poquito en español, pero tengo que decirlo en inglés rápidamente. Pero quiero que sepan que necesitamos su apoyo. Yo soy la número dos. Cuando vayan a votar, yo soy la número dos. Entonces, I have to switch to English now. We try to ask you to vote for us. We try to tell you what we can do if we continue working as a school committee member. I try to tell you that if I'm going to continue fighting for better buildings, I'm going to continue fighting for parents to be more involved and feel welcome at our school. I'm going to continue fighting to see how can we see more teachers to reflect our students' populations. I'm going to continue fighting to see our building, having more decent buildings for our students. So I ask you, please, to vote for me, give me one of your six votes, and I'm going to... I think I'm number two, so I follow him, number two. November 8th, we ask you to vote for a different voice, and I believe that I can be that different voice as a school committee member. I am, and I'm not afraid to step up and talk about what is going on in our school. I might be not welcome for the school, but I'm still going to be talking about what's going on. Thank you very much.
I would just like to say that I've always put your children first, and I have enjoyed the last twelve years. Every vote that I've had has always been, how will it affect children in the city of Lynn? And I don't have a clue where I am on that ballot, but if you please remember Dona Capola and give me one of your six votes, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank you all for remaining this evening because it's been a long evening, and for those of you who need to work in the morning early, as I do, in front of students. You know, this has been such a pleasure to come before you, and as I had mentioned earlier, I decided to run because I am not pleased with what has been happening in our school system. I do believe we're doing some things really well, but I think we need to do things better. And I have well over twenty-seven years of experience in the education field. I've worked with children and families. I have a master's in education, and as Mr. Starbuck had mentioned numerous times in the debates, he's mentioned Riviera. I am... I have the pleasure to work in the city of Riviera with Mass General Riviera, and we are doing great things. And I want to bring all of my knowledge and all of my experience in assisting writing grants and funding to the city of Lynn. I want to bring what I'm giving to Riviera here to Lynn. And the only way I can do that is if you vote for me as one of your votes, and I believe I am number five, which is cinco. And I will not let you down. I am not withholding to anyone other than you and your children. I want this city to do well, I want the public schools to do well. I want my child to succeed, and the only way that is going to happen is to have a parent's voice, as well as I know Rick has a child in the school system, soon to graduate. I would like to be your parent's voice on the school committee. So please vote for me, and I thank you for your time.
The final say. This is a time to say thank you for being here. This is a time to the citizens of Lynn that either are watching or will be watching to thank you. Thank you for the years' service that you have voted with my belief that I could help run the Lynn Public Schools. It is a time to thank the students because every June, I see the pride. I see the pride and success. We sit on stage and we watch hundreds of graduates graduate. That is our end product, that is our goal. We have made good citizens. We want them to become adults that are good citizens, not only with success academically, but success with a good moral and ethic compass. I know their years here, from K to 12, and some that move forward in a transitional program, are giving those opportunities to become successful students and good citizens. I thank you again for supporting my years past, and I ask you to continue my support as a member of the Lynn School Committee. And vote Patricia Capono. Thank you, and good night.
And that is our debate. Thank you for coming, and good night.